Good evening, everyone. I'm David Merron with the League of Women Voters. Thank you all for coming out tonight to hear the four candidates versus the city council. We have two candidates running in District Five, two candidates in District Two. And this is always the moment when I realize, oh, I should have brought maps. That would have really helped everybody. But yeah, I forgot. At this time, though, I'd like to introduce the co-president of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morton.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight to hear from our candidates. And thank you to the candidates for choosing to write for the local office. We really appreciate the effort and your time and your time being here tonight to answer questions from the attendees. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920, just six months before the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. Its mission was to provide information to this group of newly eligible voters, women that were 26 million of them, and they had no idea how to go about voting. So our mission today continues to be empowering voters and defending democracy, and we hope to do that by registering voters, by providing information on the candidates and the issues, and working to ensure free and fair elections. So we are here tonight, we're a nonpartisan organization, and we are, as I said, committed to providing the voters with non-highest factual information. We do not support the cheaper candidate or the cheaper party. The candidate forums are an opportunity for you all to hear from the candidates so that you can hear their views and make an informed choice when you vote for those. We thank you very much for being here tonight. If at any point you have a card that you want, a question on it that you want submitted to Dave to ask, ask to the voters, they can. One of our volunteers will come and pick up the cards, or if you need another card, they will provide you with one. At this time, I'd like to turn it back to David Merron. Thank you.
Thank you. Another round for Kathy. After this, I'm going to ask you to please hold your applause to the very end. We are going to give the candidates one minute for the opening statements, then we'll give them 90 seconds for everything after that. You have a little timer up here that's county down, so they know exactly how much time you have. And I'll kind of lock when you've got too long. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Our first candidate is Gary Cushing, District Five.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to David Merron for hosting the candidates' forum. My name is Gary Cushing. My wife, Julie, and I have eight kids and 16 grandchildren. My top areas of concern for Fillmore are homelessness, public safety, economic development, revitalizing downtown, and finding solutions for 126 traffic in surrounding streets, and supporting our families. I'm running for Fillmore City Council, District Five, because I see there are a lot of issues that the city needs leadership to solve. I feel I am the most qualified person to work with other council members and city staff to find solutions. My background in owning my own business, Marine County Restaurant Bakery in Cameroa for 33 years, my education, my leadership as the CEO of the Cameroa Chamber of Commerce, my being on the Fillmore Planning Commission, and involved in nonprofit organizations has given me the needed experience. I believe the city council's function is not just to sit back and review recommendations from staff, but to be leading the conversation by bringing solutions forward. I look forward to certain Fillmore for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Christina Villasenor.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters. My name is Christina Villasenor, and I'm running for reelection to Fillmore City Council, representing District Five. My roots run deep here. I'm the granddaughter of farm workers who came to Fillmore in the early 1930s and lived just behind us in a little house on Clay Street. Through hard work and opportunity, they built stability for their family, showed good success of multiple generations. I believe that same story today still hangs true for Fillmore residents, those here for decades, newcomers, and everyone in between. As a career public servant and York Council member, my goal has been and will continue to be to do all I can through the policymaking process here at the local level to provide those windows of opportunities for families to succeed and thrive in our little corner of the world. Whether it's growing local and regional business economy, strengthening our infrastructure, expanding opportunities for recreation, arts, entertainment, or supporting affordable housing through various income levels, and so much more, I will continue to work for you, the people of Fillmore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is John Ardeka.
Good evening. I'm running for a city council because I have a deep love of Fillmore. I'm originally from Fillmore. I graduated, my wife and I both graduated from Fillmore High School. All three of my daughters all graduated from Fillmore High School, and hopefully my grandchildren will also be graduating from Fillmore High School soon. I believe I have the leadership skills necessary to be on the council and hit the ground running. I served on the Fillmore Unified School District Board of Education for 16 years, so I have a good understanding of governance and the role of the elected officials in regard to their role compared to the manager or the superintendent, as well as the role of the staff. So the main issues that I see coming forward are that we need more responsive representation on the council. We need to focus on our community spaces, shared community spaces, and we need to really focus on the issues that impact Fillmore directly.
We're going to have to stop you there, John. And our next candidate is Mark Austin, like John, in District Two.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters. I'm a 30-year resident of Fillmore. My clock's not running, and I moved to the small town because of the small-town atmosphere. I believe we live in one of the best communities in Southern California, and I wanted to stay that way. I joined the city council about eight years ago, and prior to that, I served 12 years on the planning commission, so I know my way around this building. I own environmental consultant firm in Wesley Village, consisting of about 25 employees. I have a bachelor's of science from Cal Poly's Analyst of this book and an MBA from Cal State New Orleans. To summarize some of the things I've done while I've been on council, I've kept a balanced budget for eight years. I've brought very many businesses into this town, grocery outlet, Red Engine Brewery, Sonic, to name a few, sooner or later. And I've also issued 10 grants downtown so they could agree to their facilities. I'm endorsed by Diane McCall, former mayor of Fillmore, and Diane, I meant Scott Lee, the former mayor of Fillmore.
Thank you, Mark. John, we're going to start our first question to you. You'll now go to 90 seconds on the timer. We have several questions here about the state of the economy in Fillmore, declining businesses, what would you do to turn it around, and other specific things that you feel that the city recently reduced economic development? Do you agree with that? So share with us your views on how to attract new businesses. Do you think the city should not have reduced the economic development budget? Do you have a little talk to your company?
Okay, so I think the complaint that I hear the most from business owners has actually been...
Did you open my turn? No. And we'll restart the timer.
Okay, so the complaint that I hear the most from, and that I've heard from several business owners, is that it's very difficult to get through the city approval process. So I think, in my opinion, that's usually a matter of communication. In other words, usually if the rules of engagement are not clearly spelled out, then usually that causes confusion on the part of the people trying to get through the maze for this city. So in my opinion, we need to do a better job of communicating what are the things that are required for a business to get started and make it through the process. If I look at the Santa Paula website for their businesses, they lay out very clearly what are the steps necessary to begin a business. And I think we could probably improve our website as well, having looked at it, actually I looked at it a few weeks ago and also today. Although we have a lot of great information there, I would certainly be open to listening to the business owners to see what we could do to help them get through the process because, again, I think Fillmore itself is a great town. We have a great workforce. Unfortunately, a lot of people commute, and I'd like to see more people working here in town, and I would do everything I could to help us make that a reality.
Thank you. Gary, same question to you. What would you do to attract new businesses? Do you think the city should have reduced the economic development budget?
Well, there has not been a focus for the city on economic development. The city budget has grown by 32.8% over the last five years, yet the economic development budget has dropped by 51.5%. We need, we have to make sure that we are customer and business-friendly. I met with Dave Rollins and gave him a survey to send out to the last 10 business customers of the planning department to see how they're viewed. Are we truly business-friendly, or do we have barriers trying to get into the city? I would propose a get-to-yes committee that would meet with all new applicants. City on the planning commission, I've had people say to me, hey, how come you guys killed that project? It never met, never came to the planning commission. So we need to have a get-to-yes committee. We need to have somebody from the planning department, somebody from the planning commission, someone from the city management office, and staff, and meet with each of the applicants so they have the opportunity to show what they want to do in the city without having to spend $15,000, $20,000, $25,000 on architectural plans. We need to be more friendly. There are software out there that tracks where businesses where you and I go to shop outside of Fillmore. The city needs to purchase that kind of software so that we can identify where our dollars are going outside the city so that we can entice businesses to come in here, to operate here, so that we can get the tax dollars in Fillmore, which we desperately need. Thank you.
Same question to you, Mark, on the economic development budget and how you would attract more businesses.
I meant, we all know that business development, job creation, and tax revenue are very important to the quality of life for all of us as individuals. I've worked through the years to streamline permitting process for Fillmore. One of the things that I tentatively worked with, with Ernie Vegas, was that we were previously making new businesses come in that were permitted, that needed to get new permits to move into an existing facility that they were already going to occupy, like Wingstop, let's say. There was already a burger came there. So what we did was, we allowed them, if they were going to move in 90 days, they were waived on everything for their building permits to get in. I've also been talking with Dave Rollins on trying to set up some districts in Fillmore where we could do little or no permitting for stuff for restaurants, bars, breweries, other types of uses that we really want in this town. So we would just waive the permitting process for them and the fees for them, and just let them move in. We need to track them somehow. We need to be more of a friendly business community that says yes instead of no to projects like Gary was alluding to. Through the years, I've heard many, many, many stories about why we weren't letting a business in, and they were stupid reasons, to be honest with you. We could have just waved our hand and said, let them in.
Thank you. Christina, we'll wrap up with you on how you would attract new businesses and your position on cutting the budget for economic development.
Sure. Thank you for the question. You know, on the cutting of the budget for economic development, I also know that we have, in turn, have invested in retail strategies. So we've actually partnered with a consultant firm called Retail Strategies, and they've been working on a five-year strategic plan for downtown Fillmore to enhance and accelerate revitalization efforts. I absolutely agree, actually, with my colleagues and fellow candidates up here, that the city needs to be more business-friendly, that we need to have, you know, cut through the red tape, the fees, and the permits, and to, you know, and to bring forward more businesses. I also know that it's been a struggle in our city, and I think you all know, for us, that we don't have also the, not only do we have to bump up the city support, I think we need to bump up the fellow business support. We have not had a chamber of commerce in the city for quite a while. We've had many wonderful attempts to actually move that forward. We've had a Fillmore Association of Business, a FAB, which unfortunately also is not able to gain traction. I think I have to look a little closer of why, why is that not? You know, why aren't we able to reform that? And aren't we really reaching out to all businesses? I absolutely believe in the strength and the structure of having a strong tourism, that's where our base is, you know, the train, hopefully the, you know, the train will come back. But we also have to look at those businesses that we haven't been reached out to, either from the former chamber or from the FAB, and really work, you know, as a community to support them. So it's the city, but it's also businesses.
We're going to start the next question with you, but I just want to let the parents know you're doing a great job. Don't worry about the kids. You need more kids. You're doing a great job. Don't worry about it. Christina, how would you lower the water cost in the community? Would you be open to cutting housing growth, maybe a moratorium? Specifically, they asked that in the North Fillmore area. But the high cost of water, what would you do to try and lower that?
The high cost of water is a big issue. So just so folks know that we have a state-of-the-art, a wonderful, state-of-the-art water treatment facility that was brought on my previous councils. It could actually serve maybe even double our city limits. Is that good? Is that advanced? We will have wonderful water for a long time to come. However, that came with a service debt that we are serving up until, I believe it's 2046. We have a service debt on our water that is until 2046. Just want to repeat that. So folks, I understand that is a large portion of why our water is so expensive. What I would say, though, about what we can do about water is, I think we need to do more in terms of educating our local residents about water consumption. And also, again, it's sort of like we're growing, well, part of my priorities is that we need to grow with our growing community. And one thing that I've recently done, being part of the utility ad hoc committee, taking leadership on that, is we do have those new water meters. And we have heard from quite a number of residents saying that, you know, water bill has gone up yet again. Thing is, is that our old meters were not accurate. We are now having accurate water readings, and they are more. But in turn, what we need to do, and what I actually took initiative to say at the council meeting, is where is our community education? Where are we looking to see where we can conserve water? We actually have these great apps who will be able to track even a flush of the toilet. So that's where I think is key.
Thank you. Mark, same question to you. How would you lower the water cost? Do you think housing growth should be suspended? Does that affect the water cost?
No, we examined looking at water rates again in April of 2023 this year, and Christina will allude to, at that time, we had a minimum usage of 10 units that they were paying for. What we did was, we looked at the water meters between 5 eighths and 3 quarters. We lowered those from $42 to $25 a meter. We took away the 10 units. We were charging $4.30 per unit. So it came up, the water was essentially around $86, whether you did nothing. So what we did was, we lowered it so that your meter was $25, and you were paying $3.14 a unit, so that if you didn't use any water, you're $25. So it kind of reduced the water rates anyway. And when Christina says water rates, it's the sewer that's costing us $103 a month. It's not the water. Everybody looks at it and always says, it's the water. No, it's $103 a unit, I meant, per household for the sewer. And what we've done for that sewer is we've kept that at $103 a residential unit for the last eight years. Because what we've done is, we went back and we looked at the bonds on the water, on the water treatment plant, and we've refinanced them. So we've saved $9 million on tax interest in the last eight years on water.
Thank you. Gary, you're next. How would you lower the water and sewer costs?
Well, by cutting development, you would actually hurt the water circles. Because how do you spread debt evenly and easier? Is by having more units available for people to be paying into that. Because if you have more housing, more housing, there's more people, more people are servicing that debt. So that would eventually pay off the bonds probably faster. And so that, and like Mark, I agree with Mark. When I look at my water bill and it says $103, $105 per sewer, I go, you've got to be kidding me. My water bill's only $30, but my sewer bill's $105? The other issue to look at is how are we servicing the staffing of the water department? Has someone gone back and done, back and seen what it takes to run that department? Or what it takes to run the sewer department? And maybe there'll be some cost savings if we get back at that one. But the biggest thing is, like Mark said, is the debt service has to be repaid. And so if we have more units, more businesses here, those rates will actually go down.
Thank you. John, we'll wrap up with this question, but you about water costs.
Sure. So my remarks are going to echo Gary's as well, and I took some notes and basically said the same thing. If you have a fixed dollar amount that you need to pay, then obviously having more people available to pay for that fixed cost is going to lower the cost per unit. So again, growth is, if you want to lower the cost, the growth is the one way to do it. That's one method of doing it. I think Mark also talked about looking at the financing. That's another way to do it. But Dave both covered those pretty extensively, so I'm not going to be the dead horse here.
Thank you. Mark, we'll start the next question with you. Tell us about your views of the current city staff, specifically the city manager as well. Do you support them? And what do you think is the proper role and relationship between the council and staff?
Well, I was going to, I've been thinking about this. I love it because we just, we just did our job as a city manager, and it was okay. I mean, we gave him a raise. But at that time, I began thinking, what is he doing? What is he doing differently than he's been doing eight years ago? And the answer is really nothing. He, at that time, was very aggressive, looking for ways to push the city ahead. And since we've given him the raise, and we've given all of the staff a substantial raise across the thing, everybody seemed to become complacent in the city, had no sat over the last six months. What I think we need to do is set up a task force to, like, two council members, two planning commissioners, and sit with the city manager and make him accountable for things that we need done in the city, such as, one of the examples was the weed abatement. It came, it passed, no weed abatement was done. So what we need to do is, we need to set up a calendar, and we need to start making things get done, and we need to have ramifications of what we need to do. If, let's say, he doesn't do three things, then he's out as a city manager. That's what we need to do. We need to take a hold of the city more. And as I, when I first got here, Dave, Dave was everything to me. As I've been through the city in the last couple of years, he's slacking a little bit.
John, same question to you. Do you support the current manager and staff? And what do you think is the proper relationship between the council and staff?
Sure. So my view on the city staff as well as the manager is pretty straightforward. Basically, the city council hires and fires the city manager, and if the city manager is not doing what the city council asks, then the path is pretty straightforward as to what the next steps are. And really, the accountability to the voter is here at the city council. If the city council is not doing what it needs to do in order to get things done in the city, then when we vote, we're going to vote at the city council in or out. And so by, you know, by every measure, that was true on school board, and it's true here too. You know, that's the relationship. You know, the city council, I don't believe, should be meddling in the staff, what's going on at the staff level. That's entirely up to the city manager. But if the city manager is not reaching the objectives that we set, that the city council would set, then to me, it's very black and white. Then we take the vote, and either the city manager stays or goes.
Thank you. Christina, same question to you. What's your position on the city manager, and what do you think is the best relationship between staff and council?
I think the best relationship between, to the city manager, and I shouldn't say city manager specifically, and council is one of partnership. And also, that with the lower staff is really communication and keeping the city council informed about how department heads are performing and how we're performing across our programs and services. The way I, you know, look at things with the city manager is, and with our fellow, with the council, is our city failing. Are we failing in certain areas? And if we are, are we communicating that to the city manager, and is the city taking action? Case in point, and I will say this for Mr. Rollins, you know, we felt that we have been struggling economically. Our council took initiative and decided to use a lot of American Rescue Plan funds for downtown revitalization, also retail strategies, to really increase business. Did Mr. Rollins do that? Yes, he did. When we have this homeless issue, I myself brought up to him, and I said, Dave, how about we apply for one of these encampment resolution funding to really, you know, not have this cycle of arrest, go to county jail, come back, and not be moved? He applied for it. The city applied for it. We're still waiting on that. And again, thinking innovatively about department heads, we lost a great public works director, and immediately, I would say, within the next month or two, we have Mr. Bellomo here with us. So I think this city manager is answering city councils.
And Gary, we'll wrap up this question with you about city manager and the relationship with staff.
Well, I believe that, you know, the city manager is ultimately responsible for the staff. The city council is ultimately responsible for the city manager. If the city manager is not doing his job, he has to answer the council. The council needs to be aggressive enough to bring stuff forward, because if they're not bringing stuff forward, Dave says, hey, this is a problem, maybe he doesn't recognize it. I would like to see where, if someone brings a problem, either at the council meeting or directly at the staff, that a record of that is made. For example, I think a couple of months ago, it was brought about weed abatement. I don't think any of these things have been done about it. But if there was a record, a log that said, okay, this resident brought up this issue, who's it going to go to for solutions? What's the timeframe you're going to give back to them? And that would be a report that would be given to the city council every month of what's going on. So we can, we have a record, because I'm sure if somebody stood up here and said, hey, I have a problem behind my house with the weed abatement, I would say that none of the council members would probably have gone and seen it's been taken care of. They would assume it's been taken care of. We need to have that accountability on issues that come up that need to be addressed. So, and I think the staff, every interaction I've had with the staff here is fantastic.
Thank you. John, we're going to start the next question with you. It's on the homeless issue. And as the writer states, that there are homeless people living mainly in the riverbed, and it seems like they're not being addressed by the city. Sometimes there's fires, drug overdoses, trash, that all drain on emergency resources for the unhoused. What would you propose as a way to better inform the community and work with the unhoused to put them into a safe situation?
Okay, so homelessness has been a problem for society for centuries. This is not a simple, well, I've got a solution that's going to solve the problem tomorrow. What we need to do is tap into the resources at the county and state level to help us to solve the problem. You know, honestly, I don't believe that we'll ever perfectly solve the homeless issue. There are always going to be, I mean, there are people that, some people are resistant to it. There's some people that are there because they, you know, they don't have a choice. So we really, you know, we're not experts at this ourselves, either the city or, especially not the city of Fillmore, being as small as we are. What we need to do is tap into the expertise that's out there to help solve the problem as it's needed. In other words, we need to segregate out, are there people that are there because they don't want to be there, and they are willing to take help? Okay, those people, they may have one type of solution. Are there people that have mental health issues? Okay, those people may have a completely different kind of solution. So again, we're not going to solve this problem overnight, number one. And number two, I think we really need to tap into resources that are outside of Fillmore to help us solve the issue, because it's a complex issue and one that's not going to be solved like a light, turning on a light switch. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a quick announcement, we do have a translator here for Spanish. If anybody would prefer to listen to the foreign in Spanish, just find Floris over there, and she'll help us out. Gary, you're up next on the homeless issue. Share with us your thoughts to work on that situation.
Well, the county's come up with a plan. I think we need to join with county, but the county hasn't solved the problem yet. So I don't think we wait for the county to come up with a solution. What they've been doing down the river bottom for the last four years isn't working. We have the same 25 people down on the river bottom that we were there four years ago. In Riverwalk area, it is a serious problem for our community down there. There is crime, there's drug use going in down there. Our neighbor's across the street, she would always walk along the Green Belt. She won't walk there anymore because she's been accosted by homeless people. The key to currently removing homeless people from the river bottom is to get rid of the arundo. There's a nonprofit organization that has taken the land east of the 23 Bridge and is planning indigenous plans. Maybe we should look into selling the river bottom or getting it to them and have them take over getting rid of the arundo and putting the river back to what it was supposed to look like. And then we can also look to having NGOs, non-government organizations, to get involved in the process of relocating these people. Organizations like Tender Life and the City Center for Transitional Living Run by Jim Duran in Ventura, and other organizations do this without government help. They help people get off the street and back into society. I think we need to be creative and looking to what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, share with us your views on working on the homelessness issue.
Can I have three minutes?
You have one.
Well, there's a lot of stuff on my list here. First of all, the majority, you have to remember, the majority of the homeless down there are Fillmore residents. They have local connections here. What we've done, and we've said we would do, is we set up cameras around, along Purley Ten. We've done that. We need to, as Gary said, get rid of the arundo. We have been promised that we will get rid of that in quarter one of next year. We've been holding up because of cowfishing game. They've been down there, there's been nesting birds. there's been nesting birds, all that kind of stuff. So that's what's held us up. Um, the police department goes down there, they do health checks on them weekly. Um, we do, we put dumpsters down there, we do cleanups every couple of months. Um, we also, as Gary said, we, we are participating with Ventura County Homeless, um, Task Course. We're not gonna, we shouldn't wait for them. We need to continue on, we need to create our own task force with maybe a council member from District Four and Five, since they're right, right next to the Riz River, and maybe a citizen from every district. And we need to look at other options to, to homelessness that we're not thinking of. Because us as council members, we don't know everything. I mean, the public may, they have ideas that, that they can come up with that would help us. So I think that would be a start. Um, and then to report out monthly through the council meetings, every month we need an update of the report.
Thank you. Gary, we'll start with you on this next question.
I'm sorry, Dave, dinner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Christina, same question to you. I'm just testing the audience in several ways, so you all pass. Christina, what's your position on resolving homelessness?
Thank you. Um, so we have, um, taken some initiative as a city, but we can do a lot more. As I mentioned in my previous answer, um, that we have applied for a grant. A grant, we, we do not know if we're gonna get it yet, but the fact is that we are taking initiative and we're gonna continue to work on that, continue to look for funding and work with partners. It's called a homeless resolution encampment, um, grant. And what it would do is, it would do, it would be a long-term permanent solution to basically resolving the encampment in the riverbed. It is, um, currently, we already, we, we are actively participating with a spirit of Santa Paula that is our homeless shelter that we've been working with. And we have been providing them through a contract funding to help with the homeless. And this is not just the encampment homeless, but we have other homeless in Fillmore that folks are not aware of. They are the hidden homeless. They are actual families with small children and they are utilizing the spirit of Santa Paula. This homeless encampment grant will work to actually, we already sought out partnering with many mansions who has the, um, some affordable housing here. Future, over here where the bus stop, people stop house housing. Both housing developers have promised to provide 10 units each for 20 units. The goal is to really remove those 20, remove those 20 homeless and through intensive treatment, through wraparound services, through working with county agencies, to transition them first and then to move to, to permanent affordable housing. If this grant doesn't go through, we're gonna continue to work on it and we're also gonna remove that Arundo.
Thank you. Gary, you're first on this next question. So tell us a little bit about what you believe Fillmore values are, why are you running, what would be your priority?
Well, I think I, I think in my beginning I said what my priorities were for, uh, what I see the, the needs for Fillmore. I think Fillmore is a great small town. The people up here are fantastic. Um, when you walk down the street, people say hi to you. Um, if you go to the valley or something like that, people don't even recognize you. Um, I think, you know, when we do some of these issues with family issues, we need to make sure that we are supporting our families in all aspects. So, um, I think I've already outlined pretty much what I wanna do, so I'll just pass on that.
Christina, what do you think Fillmore values are? What do you think is, uh, highest priorities? What are your highest priorities?
Um, I think I meant, I think I mentioned this in my opening statement, that, um, Fillmore values that we are a town that helps each other out, that we, um, absolutely work together, right? We might have, we may have differences and we, I see that all the time through our city council meetings, but we also have such a spirit of giving. So I believe that, um, Fillmore really values community, we value its children and its families, as Gary said as well. And so one of my key priorities is actually focusing on that our high population of youth, what is there for them in terms of recreation? And are those, um, amenities, are those facilities, are those fields up to par? Are they working for our, for our young people? Are they working for our families? And we've noticed in this last, I would say probably year on city council, and we've heard from families, that they are not. So one of my key priorities is, in this coming year, is to really look at the facilities, um, at the community services that we have. And, and really to model, I wanna say, you know, Santa Paula has, um, yes, they're double the size, but they also have some funding that they particularly put aside for community services to help youth, and I really see that working there. And so I see that as a key priority to upgrade our parks, our facilities. You know, families in Fillmore don't ask for a lot. They wanna be able to enjoy their children on the weekends, um, be with them. Um, our seniors, you know, just a place for them to stay, just go nice and cool during the summertime. And those are the things that I think we need to build some, that's my priority.
Thank you. John, what do you think Fillmore values need and what are your priorities in this city?
Uh, well, uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, you know, um, the, the place that the city council has in terms of the values that, that the community places very most highly, um, are those with our families, number one. And the way that happens is, you know, in a number of ways. Number one is through, uh, the safety of, of the town, because we wanna make sure that our citizens are safe, right? So law enforcement, fire, tho- those are the places where those values come through. As well as, um, as Christina's saying and the other, um, candidates, that, as well as in the, in the parks, that's the other place that the values come through. Because, again, if there are places that the families can go and, and enjoy, you know, being together, that's where the city, those values that we hold so highly, that's where the city has impact. And I, and my belief is that's where we need to focus our efforts. In, in the, in the places where, you know, the city can have an impact with, with, uh, our families, law enforcement, the fire department, parks and rec, um, those are the areas that, that have the most meaning for our families and that, that I value and I think most people in Fillmore value.
Thank you. Mark, we'll wrap up with you. What do you think of Fillmore values and your priorities?
I, I think I'm gonna repeat everybody up here. Uh, values, the family, as John was saying. Um, we need to provide more park services. We need to do, we need to provide more opportunities for our children. Where, where I think we need to focus is our business atmosphere to make a better quality of life for Fillmore. Because the only way we're gonna get out of this is to bring increased social, business development. There are many things we've been saying for 20 years that we have not done. And we need to, as a community, get together and do those things. Um, John mentioned this, public safety. Public safety is the ultimate, utmost thing in this community. Fire services, police services, that's why we spend about 50% of our budget on those services, to protect our community, to, to protect our citizens, so they are not worried about what's gonna happen to them. My, one of my, my pugs right now is to get the streets up to par. Because I'm tired of driving down the streets where I hit a pothole and it dislocates and it takes my tire off, off the car. Um, we have some extreme areas like Village Square, Orange Grove, between Santa Clara and 126, behind the Mochis. We, we need to take care of those things, we need to take care of them now. We need to get working on this as a city, as a community. I don't know how I'm gonna do it, but I'm gonna tackle that the next four years. I don't know, I, I know how I'm gonna do it, but I don't know how I'm gonna get there.
Thank you. Christina, you're up first on this next question. And again, if you have a question, just raise your hand and our volunteers will bring you a card. So certainly, one of the most powerful constituencies in any city are dog owners. And in this city, there's a question about what creative ideas would you have to improve the dog park? Particularly because there are basically no funds available for improvements.
Thank you for the question. Um, yes, our, our dogs are, are precious and we want open space to, to move around for them. Um, so we've made small improvements to the dog park. We have, um, a, a, addressed the, um, ADA issue in terms of accessibility. So previously, and again, this is under the threat of a lawsuit unfortunately, but, um, um, someone in a wheelchair or a scooter would not have been able to access the dog park. Now it is paved over, it is open, but there is much lacking. So you're right about that. It's absolutely a bare park with no shade, no grass yet for the dogs. And that's sort of a, an engineering issue about the water, but something to work, to work, um, to work on. You know, to really, to make it be a place that everyone just wants to go and enjoy a spot with their dogs. It's a nice dog park, a clean dog park. I think we can all agree on that. Um, funding, yeah, you're right. It is, um, you know, we look at our budget and as we've, we've said, we are, we are coming from 10 years ago, then maybe more like 15, um, almost being insolvent, to be very conservative with our funds, um, rightfully so. And being able to, um, have that balanced budget and to, to basically start to thrive, we start to hire some more. Um, and so we, you know, we do have some funds possibly, um, within our general fund reserve to really kickstart things like that. But we also have to look at what is, what are our residents willing to do? Are we willing to do a half cent sales tax? Are we willing to look at a bond? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, same question to you about dog park, how you would improve it?
Well, I, I don't think sales tax will fix our dog park, but, um, for a minimal amount, what I, what I've, I used to live on Hardestale and I had a, my, my, the dog park reminded me of how my yard looked when I first moved in. And what I did was, I had to come in and disc this soil down about two foot and start mixing in mulch. Within a year, I had grass on top of that, nice grass. So I, I, I can, I can look at cheap ways to get this done. We could plant trees, we can do drip irrigation, we can put some more shade out there. There are ways that we don't have to spend a lot of money to upgrade that dog park. Because what happened was, the ADA money that we put into the dog park was what we, with the, what we were gonna actually use for the dog park. So we're kinda, we're buying an eight ball right now, we don't have enough money to put into the dog park. So I think that there are creative ways that we can, we can make it doable and make it a functional dog park. But it's gonna take maybe a year, maybe two years to get the, get the soil all worked in it, get it all, all ready for grass. And like I said, put a couple of trees in there, start doing drip irrigation in tomorrow.
Thank you. Gary, dog park?
Well, the first month I got on the planning commission, every time I'd go to the, the meeting, my wife would say, would you please ask him about the dog park? Would you please ask him the dog park? And I'd come home and I'd say, well, it's not gonna be done, it's not gonna be done. And then I finally came home and I said, honey, it's gonna be done. Well, when it got done, she said, that's it? I mean, it's just dirt and, and it's not very nice. I would think we'd like to try to get a working group of some citizens and two council members and start doing a survey around what other dog parks look like. Um, and we don't have to have the Cadillac dog park, but we have to have something that's a little more functional for dogs. Um, we can also look into other types of funding. Is the city willing to sell sponsorships to businesses to help sponsor the dog park? Maybe that's an issue we could look at. Then we could have somebody come in and they said, you know, uh, Ackerman, they do mulch. And maybe they'll come in and, and give it to us for free. Bill Camarino is a very good person, I think he would probably do it. Um, so I think we just need to be creative in how we get funding for this, to do it. And I know it's not gonna come from the city budget because we don't have it. So we just need to get creative on how to get other funding available for it. Thank you.
Thank you. John, we'll wrap up with you.
Okay, so, yes, we have a problem with the dog park. Um, in, in my opinion, we've kinda covered all, most of the issue, but, but I think what Gary was saying was basically what I was thinking, which was, hey, we, we could set up a working group of dog owners, since they have a vested interest in the park, and see if we can get, uh, that working group to get together to, uh, to start off with a plan. What, what do we need? Do we need shade? Do we need mulch? Do, you know, what are the things that we want that are affordable and doable that are outside the city budget? And then, of course, we're gonna have to work with the city, uh, staff, because anything we do is gonna have to go through the permitting process and it's gonna have to be looked at. So, um, and of course, you know, if, if we, you know, if the, the city council decides that we wanna work, work with this volunteer group, then hopefully it'll grease the skits and make things move more quickly. So, uh, in my opinion, we've, we've talked a lot about the same types of things, which is, hey, there's not money for in the city budget, so what are the creative things we can do? And I, I, again, I don't wanna beat to that horse here, uh, but, but those are all great ideas.
Thank you. Mark, we're gonna start with you. Trying to get in two more question candidates, so we, uh, stay on time, we're a little faster. And Mark, the question for you is about what would you do to ease and simplify the permitting process for homeowners? Currently, this questioner says it takes three to four months at times to get a permit.
Well, it, it's kinda the same as the business permitting. We need to probably do what Gary was referring to. We need to set up a, a working group of two council members, two planning commissioners, development staff, and we need to sit down with the, the person coming in and the developer, I meant the, the development staff, and say, how long's this gonna take? What do they need to do? And make it very clear on what they need to do. Maybe, also, I've heard this from someone. Make the fees, tell them what the fees are, don't make it like we're trying to bankroll this on them. Um, so I think it's very simple. It's communication, be clear upfront, put a deadline on it, check it off, and let just move on down the road. Because a, a, somebody getting a decline on a, on a house permit after four months, I've been, I'm a homeowner and it, it would piss me off, to be honest with you. Um, that's about it.
Thank you. John, same question to you. What would you do to ease and simplify the permitting process?
Okay, so to me, this is again, an issue, um, that really hits home with the city manager. If the city council sets a goal, so let's say that, um, well, I'm gonna pick a number here, let's say right now it's taking four months. So let's say we look at other cities, similar sized cities, and it's taking an average of, let's say, one month or two months. So the city council should set a goal for the city manager and say, within X amount of time, you need to have all your permits at this number to be at, at the average. And we're gonna hold your feet to the fire. That's, in my opinion, that's what the city council needs to do. It's very straightforward, there's no, you know, magic about this. If he either executes and makes it happen and gets his staff to do it, or he doesn't.
Thank you. Christina, same question about permitting?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I agree actually with, very much with, um, what all candidates have said thus far. I think also we need to look at, um, at what the county is doing. Um, and again, it could be a, for a new home build, but I believe a lot of what's happening now are the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. Folks are looking to see if they get out a granny flat, um, in the back of their home, whether it's for granny or it might be for, you know, um, a, a child who's now a grown adult and is looking to, to have a space of their own. I, I am aware that the county does have, um, sort of like ready to go template ADU, um, uh, design structures, um, you know, the things that, and I don't believe that the city of Fillmore has adopted those, um, those templates that are from the county. So, so particularly, I think that's one thing that we can do on accessory dwelling units, is let's look and see what, what's already been done and then can we bring in what the county has already streamlined in terms of this and bring it into the city of Fillmore. Um, and I also just, like I said, just wanna agree, I really, um, like the idea of, um, having a, sort of a, a timeline and saying, you know what? As, we're gonna be doing good business with home builders and those who are building an ADUs, we should have a timeline. We should say, okay, within like, you know, um, the 30 day mark, you know, have they been able to secure this, that and that? Again, not waiting on the homeowner, right? Or the, the builder, um, who, who, maybe they're not turning back in those, those permit fees and are holding on to it. But if they're able, if we're able to, as a city, um, you know, have that deadline, then it would be really key.
Thank you. Gary, we'll wrap up with you on this.
Well, this problem was brought to me, um, a gentleman out in, um, put plans in for a patio cover he put up. He put the plans in, architectural drawings and everything, and it was kicked back to him, said, you have some, you, you've got this work footage on here wrong. So he sent it back in. Four months later, he got it turned down from staff saying he, he couldn't get a bill to commit because his patio cover was too big. So I took, Carrie Brokey and I went up to Dave Rollins and said, Dave, this doesn't make sense. Why, why would he be kicked back and why would it take four months to tell him that he doesn't, he's not approved? Well, to Dave's, Dave's credit, within three days, he got approval. So somebody in the planning department dropped the ball on him. So I know we do plan checks outside of the city. We contract them out, but maybe we should have somebody on staff here that is qualified to do over the counter plan checks. That would very, very much help to get that done. And also with some of the business, the quick business turnarounds, if you wanna get a, uh, if you want to get a CP here, it costs you $6,500 to get a beer and wine license in, in Fillmore. That doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. One of my favorite things is to always end on time, but we don't have the school board forum. I'm just wondering if the audience would allow me to go maybe five or 10 minutes over? Is that over your head?
No.
Thank you. All right. Gary, you're up first. So share with us your views on how the city should have policies regarding proclamations specifically. Would you support a pride proclamation for, by the council in June? Any other thoughts you want to share on the LGBT community?
My feelings are that the city should only deal with what is the city's real loss. Making a proclamation for any group, I think should be looked at. And I think actually right now, proclamation can be made just by the mayor by themselves. I think the council needs to vote on proclamations. Because if there is, there is, if there is one person on the city council, a mayor, that is totally against or separate from all the other four council members, I don't think the city should be put on the hook for a proclamation. I just don't think that makes sense. I do believe that there is room for resolutions on, on issues. And if they want to bring forth and the, and the council passes that it's a resolution, then I think we should do that. If it's something that is so big, that it impacts families, values, that I think proclamation shouldn't be done by just the mayor. We can do a resolution, have it voted on by all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, same question to you, your policy or your views on policy for proclamations? Would you support a pride proclamation? And any thoughts on the LGBT community in general?
Okay, sure. So our current policy has been to have the mayor be the, the person who, who does the proclamation. I, it, it has worked. You know, I, I think we have, we rotated through mayors and so that has been a policy that, you know, I guess I just have said, okay, that's something that, that when the mayor would like to do it. And also too, because I think as people, as they rotate through mayor, there may be a particular interest that the mayor has, wants to bring forward. And again, this is just considering for all different proclamations for different issues and, and recognitions throughout the year. And so a different person, different kind of proclamations. And I'm, I am okay with that. In June, I would do a pride proclamation. I believe in that we need to recognize communities that are still continuing to be, to being really disadvantaged and discriminated against in our, in, in our whole nation, in our society. And so as a community, again, if we are in Fillmore, if we are together, we were talking about being inclusive. It's being inclusive, everyone, you know, in our community. And so I absolutely would do a pride proclamation. And my feelings on the LGBT community is that they are Fillmore, they are part of our community and that what we can do to embrace that community and show them that we care and that this is a safe space, this is a community that, that welcomes all. I think that we, that we should do that as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. John, same question to you, are proclamations and supporting pride proclamation to you and also the LGBT community?
Sure. I have no issues with making a proclamation for the LGBTQ community. I mean, they, they are part of our community. They already are here. And if anything, something like that would go a long way towards decreasing the number of suicides that we see from that kind of a community. Because the reality is the rejection of people that are different is why these people feel like they're on the outside. And so anything we can do to help them feel like they're part of our community. There are relatives, there are friends, you know. We love these people. Can't we show them the love that, that, that we have for them by making a proclamation? Is that so difficult? Especially when a proclamation is, it's, it's words that make people feel better. And what is wrong with that? How is that a bad thing? So for me, absolutely, I would, I would support that. I have no issues with that. I think that anything that makes people in Fillmore feel welcome is a good thing. So that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, we'll wrap up with you on this question.
At one time, we were discussing whether we were going to allow, whether we were going to vote on the whole council making proclamations. We kind of mixed that idea. We, we, we were going to do that, we decided not to, I don't know why we did. As far as the LGBT community, I believe that all people in Fillmore are equal. But I do not believe the council should be involved in matters concerning personal or private relationships. This is regard, this is regardless of whether they involve heterosexual or people of the LGBT community. I believe it's not part of the city business or should it be discussed on the diets? I also do not support putting one group above another. It causes hatred and anger on both sides. For this reason, I do not support a pride month or a pride proclamation. The LGBT groups are free to celebrate without city government involvement. And that's how I feel.
Thank you. John, we're going to start the next question with you. So the questioner asked about what would you do to help clean up downtown? There's trash, sidewalks are dirty, just a few things that would help make the city look better. And also, could you do something to help publicize events that are going on in the city?
Sure. So I think, you know, one of the things that, of course, us of the older generation have a hard time with is technology, embracing technology. And I think honestly, one of the best things the city could do is go more in that direction in terms of publicizing things. Because, you know, the way, you know, how many people still have to get a newspaper? Well, it's, I'm sorry, there's not very many anymore. A lot, a lot of the younger generation, they get their news from TikTok, they get their news from their social media. We need to embrace that as a city and in order to have an impact. If we want to publicize events, that's the way we've got to do it. Because the younger families are not going to see it in the paper. They, they don't get the paper. Okay? So that's number one. And then as far as cleanup, I mean, you know, I, I walk my dogs in the morning and often see the cleanup crews in the mornings and they're, they're blasting the sidewalk. So it's possible that, okay, maybe we need to do that more often. Maybe we need to, you know, schedule that more often. So I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that. I think that when, when I look at the sidewalks after they've gone through with, with their power washers, they look great. So I, I think it's just a matter of frequency. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, what would you do about cleaning up downtown, trash sidewalks? And also, what can you do to help publicize events?
Well, we do have a lot of events downtown. Unfortunately, we had a family day and a party because like John said, it's not being publicized. I know people say it's put on the website. Well, I don't go on the city website every day. But then you get the July 4th car show. We had a huge success, the July 4th car show. There was a thousand, 2,000 people here. Businesses were open, people were going in, buying things at the business. This relates back to economic development. If we have a focus on economic development and what we can do downtown to re-energize the downtown, I would love to see businesses coming in there that have a attraction for tourists. When I was with the CEO of the Cameron Chamber of Commerce, I helped start the Tourism Bureau for Camarino. We can do that here too. You know, Ernie and I have been working on a regional tourism bureau and a regional chamber to take over because businesses down here do not have the representation like they do in other cities where there's Chamber of Commerce. It can be done. And as far as cleaning up downtown, I think John, you're right. It needs to be more, done more often. But if, if we're generating more dollars down here, we can have the money to spend downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, same question to you about cleaning up downtown and publicizing events?
It's going to sound like a repeat of the other two. The newspaper is not the way to get this out. We need to use social media, we need to advertise more, we need to go make more regional newspapers, more regional Facebook, and more regional Instagram. We can get the, we can get it out there. So, so when we do events like John was saying, the Founder Fun Day, I was expecting more people to be downtown. We had maybe 15 to 100. And the downtown was blocked off, it was made a big deal. So we need to do more to, to advertise our events. The cleaning, yeah, we, we, we started the cleaning about, probably about two years ago. We were having, we were getting the guys that were in front of Central Market urinating, basically, and, and making, so people wouldn't walk past there. So what we've done is we've started cleaning. Cleaning keeps them away, keeps it off the, I mean, it keeps, as you clean things, people don't want to make them dirty. So I think more street cleaning, more garbage pickup, that, those type of things will help.
Thank you. Christina, we'll wrap up with you.
Sure. Thank you. Yep, you know, beautifying downtown, we, we have started, we do need to be more frequent when it comes to the cleaning. And we, we need to take some actual plans that we have this last year. And I, I saw the actual plans to redo these planners and to have, you know, have some flowers. You know, just, it's, I think there's some bushes that occur like sort of every, every few businesses there on Central Avenue. We just need to redo that. We need to pull that out and make it look tighter, make it look neater and cleaner. When it comes to publicizing events, you know, it's a tough one. People often say in Fillmore, I didn't, I didn't know about it. And, you know, with social media, of course. But also what's key is getting the people involved. And what I mean by that is when I come back to the idea of the May Festival, that people can remember the May Festival from years ago. May Festival drew people, it brought people because people actually, residents participated in the May Festival. They were there, whether it was Lions Club, Rotary, the churches, you know, the football groups, making the food. They had the, you know, the ability to have their boots. And so, yeah, you're going to come, you know, when, hey, you know, you know that someone you know is actually working. And you're going to go out yourself. So that's the idea of actually, I want to, this is one of my priorities too, is to bring all these nonprofits together and let's try to bring back the May Festival by actually participating and not bringing in food trucks, food trucks from San Fernando Valley or Alway, but having local vendors, our local people be a part of it. That's what will bring people out.
Thank you. Christina, this will be our last question. And it's, Christina, we're going to start with you. The city of Fillmore is now really transitioning over to districts. Four years ago, there were no districts. So tell us, Christina, what are some of the ways you, you as a council member in your particular district will keep in touch with residents of your district and also your philosophy as far as how you feel you represent your district versus your city?
Okay. Right, this is a great question. So first part, like how, how you keep in touch? Absolutely sharing my cellphone, sharing my email and having regular meetups. I actually intend to have a couple more, you know, coffee with Christina, just in person, for those who want to be in person. And also, I have started this a little while ago and I lost track of it, but I want to bring it back. And that's actually letting people know online through Facebook Live, Instagram, what's, one, what's, what's on the agenda? And then after the meeting, here's a brief summary. Because folks will not really look at those, you know, the meeting minutes. Some of them are watching on Channel 10. But people just want to brief literally a 30 second to a minute, what's happening in the city of Fillmore. So I'm happy to provide that, I'm happy to meet with folks. Second part of your question was about, I think districts and?
Just sort of your view as far as representing your district versus representing your city.
Okay, absolutely. So, you know, anything that is in my district, whether it's a park or road, any kind of infrastructure that has to do with someone's house, come to me, I will be your district representative. But also, if anyone in another district has an issue, feel free to contact your person, but contact me as well. I think, you know, we represent our districts, but when we come together as a city council, we are all, as they like to say, like my house kitchen, we're all part of the black team now, right? We're, we're all representing every resident in Fillmore and working together for them. So that's how I see it.
Thank you. Mark, same question to you as far as communicating as a council member with the residents and how you view the districts versus the city?
Well, it's been interesting to run my first district election because it's been very different than running a citywide election. I think as a district, I'm going to, I look more towards it's now my little fiefdom and I need to take care of everybody in my little district. I was told that wasn't going to happen when we went to districts. But I've already seen it starting to happen. I need to reach out more to my constituents and I need to be available for them. Like Christine was saying, more, more putting my cellphone out, more meeting with people, more holding city hall meetings with just me as a council member to listen to their gripes. Now, as versus being a city, I still look at me as a council member for the whole city. I'm not just in my district. Because if I, that's what I was afraid of, was what going to happen when we split into districts. We kept saying, oh, we're going to end up, Indy, I'm just caring about our district. Well, I'm one of the few council members, as Christina has been up here, who has a rule, has rule the whole city. And that's how I'm still looking at my, my way of seeing the city. I look at everybody, even if they're not in my district, as one of my constituents. I represent the city, not just my district. I do in a way represent my district.
Thank you. Gary, same question to you.
You know, that's the biggest question when people have been going door to door saying, because I, I deliver maps to everybody saying, good luck, congratulations, you're District 5, and guess what, you get to vote this year. And people are saying, you're kidding me, what do you mean I get to vote this year? Yeah, you won't be able to get, vote for city council again for four years. It has been very confusing to people. And I've been telling them it wasn't the city's fault that had to go to this, it had to do because of legal reasons. While we, Mark, even though you're elected from District 5, you represent the whole city. You look for the welfare of the entire city. Yes, if somebody in my district would come to me and say, hey, I have a problem, I'll help you get it fixed. But if somebody comes to Mark's district and, or comes to me about something in Mark's district, I'll let Mark know about it, but I'm not going to disrupt it there. I'm going to also pursue to go through with it. Because you're going to go to the council member you feel more comfortable talking to, not just because they're one in your district. I put my email address on every single flyer and everything we put out. It's an open email to anybody. My cellphone will be open to anybody. I'll have my wife have the door open for you guys so you can come in and, and I'll see.
I'm on over.
She loves to do parties. But the thing is, the bottom line is, we will, we will represent the entire city. Gary, thank you.
John will wrap up with you.
Sure. Similar to what other candidates have said, even though we're elected by each district, really, we represent the entire city. So in my opinion, it's, you know, it's pretty straightforward. I, I'm going to listen to any Fillmore person who has a complaint or a compliment about what's going on in the city. You know, and that, that's my philosophy. And actually, even in talking to people, because, you know, putting up signs, I'm, I'm not just putting up signs only in my district. I mean, I'm getting requests from people in other districts, hey, John, can I get one of your signs too? And of course, inevitably, when I put a sign over there, the neighbor comes over and says, hey, you're running for city council? You know, what, what do you know about this? What do you know about this going on over here? So again, to me, you know, our job is to serve the city. We don't rule over the city, it's not our fiefdom. We are servants of the population. And that's the entire population, all of the population. East side, north side, west side, doesn't matter. We listen and will reflect, or our job is to reflect the views of the people that talk to us and the people of Fillmore. And we serve at their will. So that's my philosophy and I guess that's where it starts.
Thank you. We're going to start closing statements in a moment, but how about a round of applause for these candidates? And also putting on these forms, it's a team effort from the League. I just had to point out at the front hallway, we have a Catholic who has our membership table. If you want to learn more about the League, stop by and see her. I'd like to acknowledge all of our volunteers, Kathy, you met, Wayne, Carol, Karen, Pat on the outside, Pat inside, Cheryl and Roger. How about a round of applause for all of them? We are recording this, it'll be on the League's website in a few days. That website is L W V, like the Women of Voters, L W V, VentureCounty.org. Also want to thank the city of Santa Paula, Ms. Olivia, Ms. Relling, were very helpful in putting this on. And if you're interested in more forums, you can come to Santa Paula's. Oh, I'm sorry, City of Films, please. We do have a forum coming up in Santa Paula on October 8th, if you want to see that. So with that, let's go to our closing statements. Mark, you have a minute thirty.
Okay. What I plan on doing over the next four years is to strengthen and grow the local economy. As I said, you know, business development, job creation, and tax revenue are what gives us a quality life in this community. I plan to continue to try to streamline the permitting process. And we need to be a city that says yes versus no to projects. I'm going to continue to provide public safety resources for a secure community. You know, Venture County, including the city of Fillmore, is one of the safest places to live in the state of California. Over the past eight years, I have made sure that we have adequate police funding, adequate fire funding, and I will continue to do that. And this is my, this is my, my, my boogaboo. I'm, I'm tired of looking at our streets and the potholes and all these things that are going on. And I kept thinking, how, how can I, how can I get money to maintain these, these streets? Because, you know, we get, we get tax revenue, gasoline revenue, and then we get gasoline tax and sales revenue, but that doesn't go very far. We get about $250,000 a year out of that. So we need to start carving a little bit of money out of our general client reserve. And we also need to start applying for grants and federal grants. There's some big federal grants out there, which are the Safe Street and Road Program. They're putting $5 billion into local and regional. They're putting $5 billion into local and regional streets, and we qualify for those.
Thank you, Mark. Our next, Marcus Canada in District Two, the other candidate in District Two is John Cardigan.
So, thank you all for listening to us up here. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. Fillmore gave me a great starting night, and I'm sure Fillmore continues to deliver for its citizens. My wife Beverly and I chose to come back to Fillmore after our time in the military. I am committed to Fillmore, and I'm committed to ensuring that our community prospers and continues to provide the environment for our long-term and new residents to lead a happy and fulfilling life. By focusing on being responsive, I will be available to hear your concerns. By focusing on our community spaces, I will work with the city staff to keep them maintained. By focusing on Fillmore, I will avoid distractions that take our attention away from our city. By focusing on local business, I will work with city staff to ensure that our business climate is positive and helps our local economy grow. And as a small business owner, I can assure you, I will definitely be listening to our small businesses. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Christina Villasenor in District Five.
Thank you. I'm running for reelection as city council to continue the work I've done for the last four years, to represent all of Fillmore and be a strong leader and advocate for our families on issues that matter most and affect our everyday lives, those here in our town. I've been working day in and day out to ensure the city runs well and is accountable to its residents, and we've got work to do, and I'm going to continue to do that work. I've served with integrity, respect, and a constant curiosity to dig deeper and get a full understanding of issues, and I've served with humility, knowing that I'm part of a larger team, and when we work together, we can succeed and achieve really great things for the people of Fillmore. We do have our challenges, housing, our infrastructure, our local economy, and extreme weather events, as well as keeping up with all these needs that we're talking about in our growing community. My track record shows that I am the leader, and I'm more than up to the task. I humbly ask you to put your confidence in me once again, and vote for me, Christina Villasenor, to represent you in our Fillmore City Council. Please visit my website, FillmoreVillasenor.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Kerry Christian, District Five.
You know, as I said in my opening statement, I have the skills to bring new leadership and direction to the Fillmore City Council. I have been endorsed by Ventura County Supervisor Kelly Long, Mayor Kerry Barokey, Councilmember Mark Austin, the Sheet Metal Workers Union, former Mayor Ernie Vegas, and former council member Simone Alex, and Tim and Amy Garola, to name a few. My extensive background of owning my own business for 33 years, my education with a bachelor's degree in political science, and a master's degree in public policy and administration, my involvement in the following nonprofit organization, the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Clara Valley Board of Directors, Road Group of Fillmore, school board member for Viseryal Charter High School, founding board member of American League of the 805, ward chair for Mobility 21, and that is a regional transportation organization. And my time as a planning commissioner for the city of Fillmore has given me the experience and leadership skills to address the issues that face Fillmore. As a planning commissioner, I have met with the city engineer to exchange ideas on how to improve the traffic flow on 126 and surrounding streets. I have met with the city management who pledged a survey to ensure that with our business community, that we are truly a business-friendly community. I have met with the planning director and staff to see what we can do to replace a potential business with the closing suit here in Fillmore. The homeless problem has not been improved in Fillmore. The same people in River Bottom have been there for four years. We need new ideas. I do not focus on one segment of the population to represent, but instead of all the residents of Fillmore. I will bring solutions for issues and not just wait for staff's recommendation. Fillmore is a beautiful city with great people. Thank you for this opportunity, and I hope you will go and be a Kerry Christian District Five.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. Thank you all for coming out. Good night.